The November 21st, 2017 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. And I need to announce that we are recording this for LCAT and also for the minutes. And ask if anyone else is recording it, may they please identify themselves?
Yes, sir. It's TB 22.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, we can proceed. The first item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing on the mixed-use overlay district.
Do I have any more readings to find?
I have a communication problem with my clients. And my name is Frank Fitzgerald. I represent M&amp;M, a developer. And they were waiting for me at my office at Center Square. And now they're on their way, so we can get started.
That is a communication problem.
Yeah, it is.
So, where do we stand on this? We got, um, Seck for you suggested, um, the suggested bylaw and the suggested guidelines, standards.
Yep. The, uh, we had some meetings with Mr. Smith and Denise Bernard. And I think we've, uh, we redrafted it based upon their comments and submitted them. And I think this is, uh, the product of a good dialogue over the last several months. At one time, I know the board was concerned with the overlay district concept, and that is now not, uh, not, not, here they come, anyway, not included is not the request. It's a fixed district.
Okay.
In addition, I know that there was, um, some concern with regard to the preservation of the underlying zoning for the industrial garden district. And, um, after discussions with Mr. Smith, it was determined, and the clients agreed, and John can comment on that, that they could go forward without that requirement as well. So with those, with those are a couple of, and then we did have a very thorough review of the uses. And, um, and it's my understanding that the board will, has the ability to approve, recommend favorably or unfavorably the zoning change to the city council, or town council. And, um, that would include the district, the language itself and the zoning bylaw and the use, changes to the use table. The design standards are not part of that vote, as I understand it, they're just, uh, for purposes of guidance.
Except that we could adopt as guidance, but it would not be actually part of the bylaw.
Right.
And as I understand it, the size, the minimum lot size now is now 20 acres.
Right.
It was larger earlier.
It was 40, one time, yeah.
Which would enable this zone to also be used elsewhere in town if we were to choose to do that.
Yes.
So, we're not zoning just for a single lot this way.
Right.
Which is much better. Any questions from the board at this point? You've all gotten this stuff, I think, in advance. And hopefully you've had chances to review it. Are there any questions or concerns? Russ?
No.
You have some comfortable? The only thing I'm not sure of is what the numbering on this is going to be.
That's exactly the question I had. Would it be, I think, under section five? That's where you have your heavily residential stuff and your industrial garden park stuff.
It would be five, but what, five what?
Five-ten. I think you go to five-nine right now with swimming pools?
Yep. Yeah. The, uh, yeah, it would be five-ten.
So we amend the use as well, right?
Yeah. But that's just in these industry.
Okay, yeah.
So that works falls.
Okay.
Overall.
I don't think that shows up in the law.
Okay.
Yeah.
No questions from the board? Do you have any questions from the floor?
Good evening. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. Um, quick question, George. Is there any way that somebody, either Mr. Fitzgerald or you, could explain what the maximum residential impact would be at this location based on the current bylaw that you are considering tonight?
If you could comment on that, basically the number of units and the number of people that would translate to.
Uh, based on the math, it would be, could be up to 648 units. Um, that would be probably 1,000 people.
And is that the goal?
No.
Okay. I mean, as, as a resident, I'm concerned about the impact on our services, on our schools. I know it's not dubbed a family environment because the, based on what you're marketing, the, the units are going to be higher end and two master suites, that sort of thing. I realize you can't really include that realistically in a bylaw itself. So, as a, as a taxpayer, I'd like to know what the full potential could be tax-wise for our infrastructure and our services, police fire with that kind of maximum use. And is there a way to perhaps modify that a little bit?
The one thing I can say on this, I've obviously just got to go to council as well, and they're going to ask the same question, is that this will be subject to site plan review, which means that it will have a traffic study. And under site, they, under site plan, they will be submitting a specific number of units in the site plan. If the feeling is that that is over, even though there's a certain maximum in here, we're going to have to look at that and the traffic and the roads and everything else and make sure that the site plan that's submitted, in fact, is doable for the town. And that's why we do a site plan review, right?
Mm-hmm. No, we're, um, you know, we're very pleased with, you know, we don't believe we'll have a utility impact at all. Um, you know, it was a major manufacturing facility, so we have lots of water and sewer. On Chestnut, uh, we will have sufficient capacity on Chestnut. We do expect there'll likely be an improvement made at either end, at the two lights. Um, we could envision that. And that'll, something that'll come out in site plan and, uh, you know, with the, with the traffic impact study. Um, again, based on our, you know, our experience, you know, owning and managing these types of places, um, really very, very low impact in terms of even schoolchildren. Um, you know, we have communities, the one that's most like this is over 400 units. And we don't have 15 kids. Um, you know, it's just not, there are, for this price point, and I apologize, I don't know who I'm supposed to be talking to.
I'm asking you for information, so please give us information.
Um, at this price point, you know, this type of concierge living that we're talking about, um, a family has better choices in East Long Meadow than, for that same housing dollar, than to live in a, in a vertical environment, in a, you know, in a fairly, you know, dense, um, you know, environment. It's really set up for millennials, for, and for empty nesters, really is almost our biggest market. But for better or worse, the empty nester that wants to live there doesn't want a retirement community. They want that vitality. They want the ability to have, you know, the, the people walking around the place and that energy level that exists from, from living in, um, in this type of environment, this type of mixed-use environment. It's different, admittedly. It is different than, than what you have in East Long Meadow, without question. Um, that's one of the reasons why we think it's going to be very successful, is because it doesn't exist, really doesn't exist in the region. Um, you know, which is, uh, you know, can be very, very interesting and dynamic for East Long Meadow. But, um, but overall, it's, though it's, it sounds like a lot, um, in the grand scheme of the town and the region, it's not. It's not a very big project at 40 acres. Um, it's, uh, it's very manageable. It will come in over a period of years. Um, it's not going to pop up and be there all at, at one time. Um, so, you know, and again, with the demographic trends that are, that are going, um, you know, the baby boom echo is, is kind of ended. And, and, you know, we're seeing declining school enrollments around the region, uh, you know, so we expect that there'll be that, you know, some capacity in there, even if those types of things exist. But, um, you know, it really doesn't. And then the final thing is, because it's managed, we'll have staff on, on site, you know, 24/7. You know, we'll have, during the day, we'll have, you know, five, you know, five or six people on staff, you know. So those types of things that even, you know, those calls that you might get, you know, you might get a police call because an alarm goes off or something like that, we handle those things. Um, you know, we handle even, you know, you own a townhouse, you own a condominium, but you need to have a plumber come, we'll go let the plumber in. You know, like, it's, it's that type of concierge living. So it's, it's a little bit self-contained, but not gated, not, you know, but it is a little self-contained.
And we do have to distinguish between the bylaw, which enables the project to go forward, and the site plan, which is specific to the project, so.
George, could I follow up?
Please.
So is there anything specifically written in the bylaw that speaks to how you're planning to market these units, or will it be listed just as apartments? And two-bedroom apartments, or three-bedroom apartments, and how is that going?
The bylaw really, this is something you would address in a bylaw.
I realize that. That's why I'm asking, I know that.
This is a marketing issue, okay? But the bylaw allows, okay, is integrated uses. It doesn't specify, you know, how, how somebody's going to market it, who they're going to market it to, or anything like that. Uh, it has lot coverage, residential density, and height. Okay? But aside from that, it's pretty much says, yes, you could have, um, you know, you're doing apartments and you're doing commercial or business in the same place.
And the commercial is still at 10%?
Yes.
Okay. So the rest is residential. Okay, thank you.
Sir, Jim Arthur, Miss Flint Farm Drive. Just two quick questions. What price range are we looking at? And secondly, where is your nearest property that may be comparable to what you plan on building?
Um, price range is, uh, rents probably in the, the $2 a square foot per month category. So, you know, $2,000 to $2,500 a month for an apartment. Um, for a townhouse will probably be, you know, upwards of $400,000. And a condominium flat would be probably in high twos, you know, 250, 275. Um, most of our concurr projects are, are in New Jersey. Again, the one that's most like this is literally two blocks from my office, in Piscataway. Um, and our largest project is, is in Cherry Hill, which is right outside Philadelphia, much, much bigger than this. But that same type of concierge living, again, we have 135 units that are built over the two years that we've been getting going there. And again, 135 units there, and, uh, of apartments, we have 182 condominiums and 100 townhouses. We have 12 children. It's just not, you're, for your, at that price point, for your housing dollar, as a family, you have a better choice. Um, in a community like Cherry Hill, or in a community like East Long Meadow.
What is the name of the property in Cherry Hill?
Uh, it's the old Gordon State Racetrack, Gordon State Park.
Okay.
Uh, so it's Park Place, Park Lane, at Gordon State Park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Please.
Christine Garska, Overlook Drive. Um, I just have a quick question in your experience with your, your other projects. If you've seen either a positive, negative effect either way on property values with such a large, I sell real estate in the town, so.
Okay. There aren't any comparables, I can tell you that.
Of course there's not, but when you have an influx of that kind of housing options, what happens to the other housing options that are in, in town? Have you seen it either positively or negatively affected?
Most, I mean, for Cherry Hill, our impact has been dramatic. Uh, we've literally, um, we've literally engendered the revitalization of half the town, of the west side of the town with our development. All of the old, broken-down, commercial stuff, all along the strip in front of us, has all been redeveloped into brand-new retail and restaurants, spontaneously beyond what we've done. Uh, from a housing standpoint, again, you're not comparable. So we're not comparing ourselves to a single-family house, because we're not. But in Piscataway, where again, we took a, a derelict site just like this, and redeveloped it, it did have a favorable impact on the adjacent residential neighborhood, again, through a revitalization. It's, it's not unlike when your, you know, your neighbor gets new vinyl siding, or gets new hardy plank siding, or gets a new brick front, and all of a sudden, you know, three neighbors paint their houses. It's, it's not unlike that. So, again, for the two projects that are most comparable to what we're talking about, our impact has been frankly dramatic. Um, but again, because we took something that was, you know, decrepit and desolate and made it into, you know, really a jewel. And that's what we would expect here.
Do you manage all of those rentals?
Yes.
And sales in-house?
Yes.
Or do you filter that through the Realtor community?
But we, uh, we work very closely with the local Realtor community, and, uh, and we, uh, we welcome them, uh, working with us. Uh, we will have our own staff on-site, you know, seven days a week, but we work very closely with the local community, because you know best. You know the community best.
Any other questions from the floor, please?
Sir, Greg Thompson, Porter Road. Just wondering, um, if the site itself, you talked about the decrepit site, if it will be, if the zoning is not changed, or if the zoning situation is not accepted, will you still plan on cleaning up the property? Or do you plan to leave it and move on?
Uh, no, we are, we are actually, that was the meeting I had this afternoon. Um, so, first of all, the, the current owner has, has owned it for a long time. So they've been, they've been long-term East Long Meadow property owners, you know, for a long time, and they're going to continue being property owners for a long time. But, uh, so they have already undertaken, you know, a superficial cleanup of the site, if you will. The secondary cleanup is going to take up, take place next. Um, and then we've already decided collectively with them that it's time, that the building is, it's had its life, it's time for, it's time for the next chapter, so.
So the current owner's going to follow through with that?
Yes, it'll be.
Cleanup process?
Yes.
Before even a transfer of ownership, is that the plan? I don't know.
They're, they're not, they're, they're just transferring ownership into the partnership.
Okay.
They're staying in, quote-unquote.
They're staying.
They're not going anywhere. They're, they're friends, they're, you know, family friends and.
Can I ask how that's funded? Is that public knowledge?
Private.
How, if it's private funding?
Yes.
To, to clean it up?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The seats down front. Other questions from the floor? Anybody else, I'm going to ask if anybody else is going to speak either on this issue or another issue, if you would go, I'm sorry to make you inconvenient, but particularly if you're over here, if you can just sort of approach and sort of stand in front of the table, it'll be much easier for Anthony to, we have, we have to record the whole thing. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the floor on this issue? Hearing none, I'll take it back to the board. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just want to, two questions. So what do you anticipate total investment, and what would that equate to for real estate taxes based upon the current tax?
Total investment's over $100 million. Um, I actually haven't worked with the tax assessor on what that would equate to, you know, but usually it's, usually it's.
It's a lot.
You know, it's what, 3.5, 4%?
Call it $20 a thousand.
Yeah, it's 20, 63 maybe.
Okay.
That's a lot.
A lot.
So it'll cover a lot of those services that.
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of the best of both worlds. It's not a whole lot of services, but pay a lot of money.
Other questions or comments at the board? Does the board feel the need to get any additional input on this before acting?
I would just like to clear that the district design standards.
Yes.
No way, shape, or form go into any kind of town draft. They're just strictly a guideline.
Right.
For a future moving forward.
Right.
Because if these were to become the standards, I would like to see a site plan.
Right.
And there's some of them, you know, there's a lot to digest.
Yes.
In, in the design standards. However, the mixed-use district proposal itself, I feel, is, is pretty clear. So I just want to make sure that the two of them are no way, in shape, or form linked.
They're not linked, we, we're going to act on, if we choose to act, is the bylaw itself, okay? The design standards are something that we as a board can adopt, okay, separate from, separate from the bylaw at a later date.
Via individual site plan or inclusively?
Well, we, there's two things we can do. We can adopt the standards, okay, as written, or as we choose to amend them.
Mm-hmm.
And then we need to apply those standards to whatever site plan is presented to us.
Right.
Okay? So, and, and since those are the standards we're putting in place, if we choose to modify them for a particular site plan, we could do that, but it's, it's.
Be case by case.
Would be specific to the site plan. And we do not have a site plan before us yet.
Okay.
Okay, all we have is a bylaw. And we need to make that clear.
Right, that's what, yeah, that's what I want to make.
Nothing, nothing is final yet.
Just a point of order, Mr. Jim?
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, if, if the council approves this tonight, where does it go? Does it go to town council then? Does it go to the voters of the, of the town?
No, no. This, if, if we approve this, when we approve this or something, when we approve anything on a bylaw, it goes to town council. Town council is the legislative body of the town, and town council can choose to adopt it, amend it, or not adopt it. Town council has to hold a hearing, and they have to have two readings at two separate meetings for it to go forward. Okay? So this is step one, and then there's, the next step is town council. And just because we're putting this forward this way, doesn't mean that town council cannot amend it. That is their right, but we're recommending, we will be recommending something to them. Other, okay, if the board feels that we have enough information.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear, the bylaw is what we're talking about tonight. We're not talking about the design standards. We're going to handle that at a different meeting at a different time.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Because I've got a lot of issues on the design standards that I want to make sure I hear, so I can talk about.
As do I, yeah. But I mean, have the concept of having design standards, I think, is great. Maybe some details on it that we need to work through. We'll do that at another public meeting. Tonight, we're dealing with the bylaw.
Okay.
Happy to.
Okay? George, I just ask one question. Is there a motion or an inclusion of the bylaw that is parcel-specific that identifies it so you can have it on your zoning map since you're creating a zoning district? Uh, yeah, it should be, well, that will be in the, in the zoning map, where we identify. Right, but it is including a zoning map change? That, that's a separate vote.
Okay. Is this a public hearing on that as well? Is it included in the package?
Yes. Yes. I mean, if you, you read through our, um, our bylaw, the parts in section five that define the different districts do not say what the boundaries of the district are.
That's correct.
Those boundaries are established by the zoning.
Typically, when you do, when the town council goes to vote, they're voting on the bylaw, which creates the district. And they're voting on the zoning map change.
That's right.
That identifies where that district is located on the map.
That's right.
Okay. I just haven't seen that.
So we will, we will need to do that probably at a separate, separate hearing. Or we could include it in this hearing.
It would be nice.
Yeah, we could include it in this hearing. And I think it's probably a great idea to do that. And the parcel identification is?
330 Chestnut Street.
Um, is there a parcel number on that? Yeah. Assessing map. Oh, it's in there somewhere.
I'm sure it's in here somewhere.
Yeah.
I didn't bring my purse with me. Track 18.
330 Chestnut Street. On map ID.
Yeah.
Map ID 18-38-0, dash, dash.
18-38-0 is the map.
Thank you for picking that up.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Good, so do I have, do you have a motion to close the public hearing at this point?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Realizing that this means that we can take no more input on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to recommend the bylaw as written and to recommend a change in the zoning map to make parcel 18380 the mixed-use district?
So moved with no inclusion of the design standards.
Very good. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we're recommending the bylaw, and we're recommending the zoning map change. Okay? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's after 6:15, so, um, we have another hearing to continue. There are seats here. You can move these chairs back. There's plenty of seats up front for anybody who would like to sit down.
So, George, my idea was that people would basically stand here, so that Anthony could get one seat.
Okay. We have a continuation of the public hearing on the adult-use bylaw. We had some amendments to the bylaw at, we're going to open that up now. We had some amendments to the bylaw at our last meeting that were suggested, and we have redrafted the bylaw to reflect that. We've also added numbering to bring it into proper place in the, you know, overall bylaws. The definitions will be in section eight. The table of uses, we will be adding 3.0794 as adult uses. And the overall, under special permits, criteria for adult usage will be section 7.39.1. Okay, take it to the board first. Is there any additional discussion here?
Yeah, I'll just start right off. So did we, uh, did we take out a zoning map?
Yep.
And did we look at the feet? You know, it can't be 100, 500 feet from a residential district, 1,000 feet from a place of worship. What is that?
Okay, first of all.
Let's just remind everyone, we are not able to, oh, you can, you get the disclaimer, we're not able to say no.
Yeah, but let me, for those who weren't here last time, let me go through the quick tutorial, okay? The Supreme Court has ruled, as far back as the 1950s, that selling of legal adult products, specifically books and other related objects, is covered by the First Amendment. And therefore, it is not possible for a municipality to ban a store such as, as we're talking about here. However, courts have also established that because of potential secondary However, courts have also established that because of potential secondary effects, that municipalities can put restrictions on where the establishment is going to go, and also can put them under special permit. And this has been held, upheld by the courts of Massachusetts. Right now, we do not have a bylaw that requires that, which would mean that this would be considered as normal retail. We feel that that is not a good thing, and so we have come up with a, with a bylaw that we've drafted and are working on to restrict the location and other aspects of the establishment under special permit. The current proposal is to allow this in the business zone, not within 1,000 feet of a school, a park, or a place of worship, and not within 500 feet of a residential zone. Unfortunately, none of our business zones are 500 feet wide, or 1,000 feet wide, I should say. They all have residential on both sides. And so the 500-foot setback from residential is not going to work. However, I had done a zoning map, which I think the board can see, and that what is available, basically, is four corners where Westwood and Maple Shade-
May I interrupt your chair, people? What is available within the 500 or within the 1,000?
Within, within the 1,000 from parks and schools and churches.
Okay.
Is four corners where Maple Shade, Westwood, and North Main come together. There's a fairly substantial block of land there. Also, North Main from about Hart, Hartness Avenue north. And if we decide to include the industrial zone, there would then be some room at the end of Baldwin Street that would be available. Okay? Which is where there has been retail before. There was a golf shop there, a couple of other things back down that end. So there is room there. Unfortunately, and there is also some business on Shaker Road, south of Chestnut Street, that currently is totally undeveloped, that would be business. So those areas are available. So we have it both the north and south end of town, and in the middle of town, there is available property.
So George, that's if we zone it business.
If, we say it can only be in business, yes.
Right.
But that's it, that's not including the setback from the residential?
That does not include the setback from residential, because quite frankly, we, we have a long linear strip of business, commercial, and industrial, and it's very narrow. Okay? It's not like we have, you know, a mall, which is, covers a large area, has a lot of setback from, from residential. All of our businesses back up onto residential. So it, it makes that not really feasible. Now, in Greenfield, where they operate right now, the setback is 50 feet. Greenfield has a very similar bylaw to the one that we're considering. The people who wanted to come in here are operating under that bylaw, under special permit in Greenfield right now. And about the only difference is their setback from residential is 50 feet.
Yeah, it seems like you need some number.
Yeah.
500 is not going to work.
Right. 50 might.
50 might.
Okay? That, that's about a third of a lot.
Did you take a look at narrowing the school restriction?
Make it 500?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I did not. I think the 1,000 from the schools and from churches is, is reasonable.
I would, yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable with narrowing the restrictions from the school.
Well, one of the big discussions that we heard, you know, was 1,000 feet from this building that we're sitting in. And you were using the boundary of the ball fields-
Mm-hmm.
-which essentially then went out to the industrial park, or came all the way over to the bike path.
Yeah.
All woods, all, all whatever. So that seemed somewhat large to me, that amount of space, because it's really not the building, it's the boundary of the property.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And, you know, my, my thought is that the kids are all over the school property.
Kids are all over in front of liquor stores, they're all in front of the vape shop, they're all over in front of other, other properties or other businesses that some people might believe are inappropriate as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, but, and there are no sidewalks along-
May I ask you what these red lines, what are the red lines?
The red lines are the 1,000 feet.
Okay.
Okay.
So you took our business areas, which, which are here, zoned in blue-
Right.
And incorporated what would fall into the 1,000-foot buffer zone?
This is the church. Okay? This is the high school, and this is the center fields.
Okay.
Okay? Which are a park.
Okay.
And are these measurements from the structure being used by the adult use, or is it from the parcel that's being used by the adult use?
From the parcel.
Okay. That specified somewhere?
Uh, it is for the schools.
Okay. Then, I think we could easily, easily add that to just number one.
Yeah.
They may not be looking at any parcel column within.
Yeah.
So then my next question would be, then, if you picked, I'm not familiar with the business districts, but I'm going to assume they were like one lot deep?
Basically, yes.
And so then the backside of that lot is probably zone residential?
Right.
So then none of those lots would be able to be utilized?
Right. That, that's what you said.
So the only place you'd be able to utilize it is where you have a business zone that's two lots deep?
Right. And we don't have, we have very little of that.
Right. So I'm not sure the, so how is then, going even going down to 50 feet?
I, I don't think we're going to be able to do a residential setback.
And my comment on the residential setback is, I think it should be 1,000 feet to, to, to match the school, the church, and everything else, because the same people that go to school, the same people that go to church and everything else, are going to live within that 500 to 1,000-foot distance.
Right.
And I think that should be covered as well.
I, I agree with that. But you can't have your setbacks eliminate every parcel in the district.
I understand.
So let's be clear.
That's why, that's why I'm thinking, there's got to be another solution to the issue because-
Does that 1,000 feet eliminate all areas in town? If we were to increase residential to 1,000 feet, it would eliminate all areas?
Not, not the garden park, for example.
I think the 50 feet does.
Would that be changing the district or zone?
It would be.
We don't allow retail in the industrial garden park. Okay? And I, I'm hesitant to make an exception for-
What about commercial?
You see, I think almost any kind of setback you have from the residential zone is going to eliminate most, every business parcel you've got.
I, I agree. I agree. Unfortunately, that's the way it works.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, our, our zoning map is our zoning map, and it's, it's very, very narrow.
The only way to do that would be to have it measured from the structure and not the property line.
No, that's not going to fly.
That would force the structure to be-
That, that's problematic.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's going to work from the property line.
But I don't like the idea of eliminating residential altogether either.
Neither do I. I'm not comfortable with that.
I mean, I mean, you've got residents that bought homes, thinking that they're buying in a particular neighborhood, and now the, the neighborhood, the zoning of that neighborhood is changing, and they never had the opportunity of making that decision when they bought their home.
The zoning is not changing. The zoning is not changing. Let's, let's make that clear. The use may change, but the zoning is not changing.
Right.
We're putting this use under special permit. The other thing to, to keep in mind is, you all know what our business district looks like. Okay? It's essentially parking out front, the back of the building faces the residential. The only thing that goes on usually behind the building is deliveries. Okay? And in some cases, some parking.
Well, what if you go with a screening requirement? That they've got to put screening along that abutting property line?
That, that would be, could be part of a special permit. Or we could put it in the bylaw.
It could be, but that would be subjective. If you're looking for something that's going to be guaranteed-
More concrete, yes.
But, but what does a screening do besides just make it a little bit more difficult to get to the place?
Yeah, that's what it does.
So you walk around to the front of the building, and you're in.
Yeah.
What about maintaining resident, um, the residential restriction? And any thoughts of thinking about commercial district?
A commercial district doesn't really gain you anything. Commercial district is brown.
Right.
It's also backs up to residential.
Yeah, you got the same issue.
You're within 1,000 feet, though.
So George, you've done most of the-
We need a little more accuracy here.
You've done most of the research on this. So what has the courts determined to be a reasonable amount of property that a community can, by zoning, restrict for these prescribed use?
There are towns that restrict it to no, no more than two parcels, quite frankly.
Right.
Okay? So-
And they haven't been challenged to the best you can imagine?
They've probably been challenged, but they, it's been upheld.
Okay.
Okay? So yeah, you don't need a huge amount.
Okay.
Commercial would open up a little bit probably in this, you said 50 feet. Commercial would probably open up a little bit in South Prairie Street, okay, on North Main. But this commercial down here-
That would be moved.
Well, that, well, first of all, that, that's unbuildable, that section.
Correct.
And is, is purple your industrial?
Uh, no, purple is-
Is residence bay, so that's off.
Yeah.
What's, what's your industrial?
The, the tan.
Tan.
Light tan. It's, it's basically along the railroad track.
Yeah. Well, how about that new mixed-use district? Where would you say it would open up?
There's residential.
That's true. That's true.
I, I want the residents to have a boundary.
But they're mature adults.
You'll get blue.
No kids. Few kids.
Yeah. Well, one of the issues with the industrial, um, you know, we knew, as you know, as a town, we newly went forward with the project of the bike trail, which runs smack through the middle of the industrial, which is town-owned and recreational property.
Yeah.
So there's a wrench there.
So I-
I would like more time.
We can, we can take more time.
I would like more time with this one.
We continue this one. Uh, the residential setback is, is an issue. I think if we open it up to the industrial zone, it's possible.
That's what I'm-
The industrial garden park is also possible, but this is a retail use. So we would need to think very long and hard about whether we wanted to introduce retail use like this into the industrial garden park.
I'd be more comfortable looking at industrial first before taking that step.
And, and it sounds like you could probably meet many of these setbacks with the industrial zone.
And industrial garden park, not industrial zone. Not the industrial zone.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah. Is it possible for us to have like a workshop session where we could sit down and spend some time-
Yeah.
And really digest this and then come back to a-
Yes.
The, the public hearing and talk about what, what we came up with?
Yeah, we can do that.
I would love to move forward with that.
I think we should do that, because I, I really feel strongly that this needs to be away from the residential area as well. And if we're talking 50 feet, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's not acceptable.
You could pick one foot, and you're still, you're still at the same issue.
That's right. I mean, and I even think, I even think 1,000 feet is not enough.
Yeah.
But at least it, at least blends in with the rest of the standards that we're talking about.
Right.
The school, the church, and the other uses.
At this point, I think we'll open it up to the floor, to residents, and start on the left, and we'll work right.
Hi, planning board. Thank you. My name is Jessamine Werner. I live in Fernwood Drive. I am a new resident to East Long Meadow. We had our many options of places we could have lived. We looked in Wilberham, we looked in Long Meadow, we looked in Summers, we looked in Southfield. We have flexibility in our choices. We specifically chose East Long Meadow for the reputation of the school system and for the family-friendly vibe here. We moved from Brooklyn, New York. So I have lived in close proximity to these types of establishments, and I can tell you, that is why we left Brooklyn, New York. It's because I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old. I'm not going to argue the constitutional merits of this. What I am going to talk about is, we are a town that doesn't have drive-throughs, we don't have a fast food chain. The logic of this makes, I'm totally baffled as to why this would make sense in any world. I have a business background in branding, brand extension, marketing, about making collaborations between things that make sense. And if I was going to brand the town of East Long Meadow, an adult novelty lingerie literature store would not make sense to me. And I also, I'm curious as to why an establishment would want to be on such a prominent location like people dropping Suzie Q. off at dance class. Oh, there's Mr. Brown's car at the adult novelty store. That does not make any sense to me. I do not think people in town are going to be shopping at this store. I think adult, adult stores require discretion. And I think this is not a business that's going to service the greater needs of the community. I also feel that, um, you know, I don't really, it's, I am not up on my statistics of, um, you know, adult products, but based on my experience of traditional retail, it's moved online. I would imagine that especially with the nature of this product, the majority of sales happens online. I would be very interested to know what the numbers are, why this is a viable business, who's shopping, what's the retail demographic, who is the consumer, and why does it make sense for East Long Meadow? That's the thing I don't understand. So, that's my question.
Just make one quick comment here. Remember, we're talking about a bylaw, okay, that is going to allow us to do special, if somebody wants to come in, they would have to come in with a special permit, which would allow us to put requirements on that that would hopefully mitigate any, any issues. We're not talking about a specific company anymore now, we're not talking about a specific proposal, we're talking about a bylaw. And we need to think about it that way so that we can draft something that will give us control, which we do not have without the bylaw. Okay? And I appreciate your comments. Yes?
Hi, my name's Barbara Donahue. Um, and again, I-
Your address, please.
Pardon?
Your street.
Oh, my address is 59 Piney Woods Drive, East Long Meadow.
Thank you.
When I heard about this, actually, I read it in the reminder, again, I know we're talking about bylaws, but I was shocked that we would even consider putting this in Main Street, basically, center of town, East Long Meadow. I have four kids, and I didn't come to this town really to have an adult novelty shop in the center. I, I just think it's bizarre. And I think, you know, as a town, we need to build our town up, guys. We, we do not need to tear it down. You know, we, we need to build it up. In Long Meadow, Wilberham, they're not having these discussions.
Right.
They're not going there, they're not even trying to go there. But they're trying to come into our town, like, come on, guys, we need to build this town up. We need to not tear it down. We have kids here, we came here for a reason, again, for the school system and for the nice, family-friendly environment. And, you know, if we let this in, then the strip joint goes down by Milton Bradley, whatever. It just keeps going on and on, because we don't have the bylaws. So let's get the bylaws like Long Meadow, like Wilberham, like Summers on our books, so we don't have to confront this. Because this is alarming to probably every parent that, you know, has paid a lot of money to move here, we pay big taxes, we don't need to tear this place down, really.
Thank you. Yes, over here.
Jim Bartham, Miss Glen France Drive. The rail trail, what type of property is that considered? Is that a park?
That's a park.
It is a park.
It's a recreation, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Please.
Gail Moore on Shaker Road. So I do not want that there. I agree with both of you that spoke, that, that was my first reaction also, is what's happening to East Long Meadow? I grew up in East Long Meadow and have lived on Shaker Road for 33 years, and have maintained our property, you know, to be a nice place. And, you know, I just feel like, like you said, it's, it's like tearing East Long Meadow apart and tearing it down. We're talking about moving. Because, you know, who wants that in, in their area? And the reason I actually stood up was because I wanted to mention something that was in the reminder from last week, was a quote. the reminder from last week, was a quote. They were talking about putting, making blackout windows and no signs, you know, just the sign of the name of the store and nothing else on the sign. And the quote was that, so that anything that may prove distasteful not to have that around. Well, I have heard and some people have seen a vehicle that this particular person, and I know you said now we're talking about bylaws, but this particular person has, owns and drives around South Hadley and areas and parks in the places where he has his store. So this is one way of getting around the blackout windows, the, you know, and the signs because the vehicle is wrapped in advertisement that is distasteful. So it would be parked on Shaker Road or on North Main Street or on, you know, all these different areas and drive around town for, never mind your children walking by or bowling, they're going to see the vehicle all around. So I just wanted to make people aware of that.
Thank you. Other comments? Sir?
Again, Jim Bartham, Miss Glen France Drive. Do we know why they picked East Long Meadow?
Yes.
Is it because of no bylaws? No bylaw?
Yes. Because they could.
Exactly. Other comments from the floor? Sir?
My name is Mark Sousa on Betterly Lane. And my concern is, I'm retired from corrections, 24 years. I have a master's degree in corrections. I've worked with sex offenders for 24 years, and they have the highest recidivism rate. They are by far the worst offender. I would rather release a murderer than I would a sex offender because you can give them all the treatment in the world, they're going to keep coming back. And my concern is, I have a four-year-old daughter, and first of all, when I drive by, how am I supposed to explain to her what that is? I mean, she can read. In the center of town, I just, I don't get it. I personally don't want it. We just moved from Springfield. I don't want it here, but I get it. I mean, there are laws that prohibit from excluding them, but if we're going to do this, it needs to be somewhere where, you know, we're not going to see this. There's not going to be a lot of residents because this is a case where if we build it, they will come. These sex offenders, they want to see these items, whatever. And I'm not saying everybody that goes in there is going to be a sex offender, but if we, we're the only ones around that have that type of store, they will come and we will have them. You know, and we don't want to draw them to our community. Prime example, people don't want prisons. Prisons are pretty safe in their community, but the problem is prisons, they bring in the inmate's family, who have been convicted as many times as the inmates, and you're drawing a very shady crowd. And if you put that type of shop, you will see incidents. I mean, there's just no doubt about it. I've interviewed thousands of inmates and probably thousands of sex offenders, and they're by far the scariest population.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. George, just to be able to clarify, at the last public hearing, we understood that the waiver site plan was denied for good reason. They are coming back with an official site plan, and because the first day of the first publication of the public hearing to advertise this process takes precedence over that future application until you guys decide what you're going to do? Is that still clear?
Until town council either adopts or rejects.
Yeah, true. I'm sorry.
Whatever we recommend.
Okay.
Yes. Basically, because we have a bylaw on the table, okay, anyone who wants to come in that the bylaw affects has to abide by whatever the bylaw eventually turns out to be.
Okay.
Okay? That's the rule.
So as long as it takes, whereas that sort of is, that particular situation is on hold until the town goes through the process.
Right.
Thank you.
And, you know, we're, in the charter, there are time limits when we submit something to council that they have to act and so on and so forth. I'm not, I hope we're not trying to drag this out because I don't want to drag it out. We've got other things that we can, we're interested in working on to improve the town, but we need to get this done. And we're going to make sure that we do it right. I'm not going to jump to conclusions on this. If it means we've got to find, do something in an industrial garden park instead and allow this as the only kind of retail there, then that may be what we end up doing. I don't know. We need to work on this some more. Still appreciate all the feedback we're getting from the residents, okay? And I think you can see that we're not necessarily trying to drag this out, but we're trying to make sure we do it right. And that's why it's taken so long. I'm sure you all have better things to do on Tuesday night. Be back.
Susan Ramaldi, 48 Millbrook Drive. First of all, I want to commend, you know, the board for all the hard work that has gone into it. When I was reading it, Don Anderson had put it on one of his, with the Facebook page, so I had a chance to view the whole thing, wasn't able to go to the first meeting. So I know there's a lot of thought that has gone into it, and I have to commend the amount of work and the outcome. And one question that I have, because I believe most people here, it's not, like you said, it's not a choice, do you want it? Obviously, no. But the thing is, is with the planning stuff, how did Long Meadow design their town that you can't even have a funeral home there? Okay? They really protested having a post office there. They only agreed to let one little thing. So I think if we continue along that frame, with the hard work that you are doing, okay, you continue along that vein, I think we will be well protected so that we will have any undesirable business coming in that town is not agreeable to, but that you will also have the opportunity for a business that you want to be able to come in, that they can skirt that. So I know there's a lot of work going around there, but that's why I figured I'd just bring those two points forward. Because it took a long time before they could even get a post office. They did not want a post office in their town, and I couldn't believe no funeral home there either. So maybe there's some little tweaking that they did that might be incorporated, I don't know, but I do thank you for all the work you've put in.
Thank you. Another comment here?
In the industrial park. I'm Wes Jukowski, 12 Piney Woods.
I'm sorry, can you stand up and identify yourself, please?
I'm Wes Jukowski from 12 Piney Woods. There is a nursery school in the, in the.
Industrial park.
Industrial park. So I don't know if you're considering that or not.
We went through this at the last meeting. At the present time, we're not including for-profit schools in this because for-profit schools move around a lot, and it's hard to do this kind of zoning when somebody could open a dance studio next door next week after they open up. You really, because for-profit schools cover everything, from, you know, a dance studio to gymnastics, to daycare, whatever. And we, as I say, if we restricted it too severely, then there was no place in town they could go, then the bylaw could be challenged in the courts. And we don't want to spend the town's money in the courts if we can avoid it. Please.
Hi, Megan Nuttman, 201 Chestnut Street. Just a comment on the daycare, particularly the one down on industrial. We drive the East Long Meadow school buses in there, so there has to be some stipulation. It is different than a dance studio. We bus kids there. We pick them up in the morning. So if we're paying to drive on that property, we should have some say in what goes on around it.
Thank you.
Good point.
Other comments?
John Rourke, 16 Adam Ridge. A charter school is a private school as well, but yet it's a school because children are going into it and learning, and they don't need a distraction of things around it. So I just want you to keep in mind that private schools and charter schools are one in the same, and that if you are selling drugs near a charter school, you can be arrested and your penalty would be higher than if you were away from that establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that. And charter schools are generally nonprofits.
No.
No?
No. There are some that are earning money, and they are not a nonprofit.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? A second. And we're going to continue it to, what's next?
The next one's December 4th.
December 5th. At what time?
The last meeting was at 6:30, so I'm not sure what time it is. 6:45?
6:45, December 5th. Give us enough time to do a working meeting.
We'll schedule one next week.
If we can schedule one next week, yeah.
You got to post it.
Yeah. You only need three days to post it.
Yeah?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll call people afterwards, and we'll find a date and time that we can get together. Okay?
Okay. Let me, probably tomorrow we got to set it up.
Yeah. All those in favor of continuation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Let me sit this way.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Let's get through the other business, and before we do our general discussion, start out with Frigos. This is on the agenda because I misinterpreted the bylaw at our last meeting.
All right.
Frigos is in the industrial zone, and there's no limit on the number of signs, just on the overall area.
Thank you for saying that. I think I take someone up this.
Read Frigos.
All right. Town of East Long Meadow sign application. Business name and address is Frigos, 159 Shaker Road. Business owner's name and address is Joe Frigo, 90 Williams Street, Springfield, Mass. Property owner's name and address is Springfield, Mass Mutual Equipment Credit Union, 1030 Wilberham Road, Springfield, Mass. Contact person is Joe Frigo. Phone number is listed here. Square footage of the area proposed sign is 32 square feet. Free standing, no. Height above the ground is not applicable. Attached to the building is yes. Distance to top of sign above vertical wall is 12 feet. It's a permanent sign. It is non-illuminated. Total number of existing signs is two. Total square footage of existing signs is 48 square feet. Number of proposed sign is one. Total square footage of proposed sign is 32 square feet. Total square footage proposed and existing signs is 80 square feet. Applicant is Sign Techniques, Inc. The estimated cost is $800, and a signed affidavit is attached.
So within their total square footage, and they're industrial, so they're allowed to have more signs than if they're a business.
How many signs are they allowed to have in the industrial?
There's no limit.
Okay. Understood? Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next one.
And our apologies for.
Our apologies to Mr. Frigo on that one.
There's two of them.
But we caught it, so.
Town of East Long Meadow sign permit application dated May 31, 2017. Business name and address is Shell, 227 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. Business owner's name and address is AMG Retail LLC, 555 South Columbus Ave., Mount Vernon, New York. Property owner's name and address is PMG SLB LLC, 2359 Research Court, Woodbridge, Virginia. Contact person, phone number is listed here. Square footage proposed sign is 48 square feet. It is not a freestanding sign. It is 14.9, 14 feet, nine inches above the ground. It's a canopy, so it's attached to the building. It's a permanent sign. It is illuminated. Total number of existing signs is three. Total square footage of existing signs is 48 square feet. Number of proposed signs is three. Total square footage proposed signs is 48 square feet. Total square footage of proposed and existing signs is 96 square feet. The application's been signed. The estimated cost is $2,500.
May I interrupt Mr. Chairman for a moment?
Please.
Why equally dated sign waivers? My apologies.
I missed the candidacy and the version.
I was missing that one little word up top.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So we've got under 100 square feet. It's industrial, and it's a gas station, so they have certain signs that they're required to have. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I just do want to add one thing.
So when Attorney Sabella was here over a month ago, I think there was a specific question
about how long it would take for them to open. He said three weeks.
Right.
That's long beyond the three weeks. So we'd like to have some accuracy when that comes next to the board.
Yes.
Just a comment.
Yeah. But I'm glad they're moving forward.
And I agree with that.
By the way, what's happening there is they waited until the expiration of the appeal period. Yeah. Then they have to go for their liquor license, and they have to go for their occupancy permit, which they didn't have yet, and get all the inspections. So it's taken them a while.
They don't have to wait to, they don't have to wait to open if they don't have a liquor permit. They can open without it.
They do need COA.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, we have another sign application here for the same.
Read that one.
Okay.
So this is, everything's the same except this is the candidacy.
Everything I read was the same.
Yeah.
I'll go from the beginning, I guess. Shell, business name and address is Shell, 227 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. Business owner's name and address is PMG Retail LLC, 555 South Columbus Ave., Mount Vernon, New York. Property owner's name and address is PMG SUB 1 LLC, 2359 Research Court, Woodbridge, Virginia. Phone number is listed here. Square footage of proposed sign is 49 square feet. It's a freestanding sign. It's 18 feet above the ground. It is a permanent sign. It is illuminated. Total square footage of existing signs is zero. The number of proposed sign is one. Total square footage proposed sign is 49 square feet. Total square footage proposed and existing sign is 49 square feet. The application has been signed. The estimated cost is $8,000.
It's a pylon sign.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is Fazio's.
East Long Meadow request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Ilda Fazio. Property owner's address is 18 Chestnut Street. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Fazio's. Owner of business is Aldo Fazio. Business owner's address is 76 Lee Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is 162 Shaker Road. Property district is commercial. It's an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Tuesday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Sunday, 3:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Number of employees, including the owner, is 21. Date of last parking plan is 2012. Summary of business is Italian restaurant, sit-down, take-out, and catering. They're installing a generator in back of the building next to the air conditioning units. Number of commercial vehicles is one. The application's been signed and dated November 15, 2017.
So they're putting a generator out back.
I don't see any more noise added, and it's not visible from the street, so I would make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're welcome.
Edibles.
East Long Meadow request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Heritage MZLLC. Owner's address is Care of Katz Properties, 254 West, 31st, 4th Floor, New York, New York. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Edible Arrangements. Owner of business is Za'ah Farad. Excuse me if I didn't say that properly.
Business owner's address is 61 Abrams Road, Chester, Connecticut. Property owner address is 430 North Main Street. Property district is industrial, so allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 to 7; Saturday, 8 to 3; and they're closed on Sundays. Number of employees, including the owner, is four. Summary of business is gift basket company. We sell fresh fruits baskets and they also deliver. The application's been signed and dated November 7, 2017.
This is an existing business that's going for a business license?
Franchise when the ownership changed?
Changed, yeah.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Last one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Vincent James Frag...
Fragamini.
Fragamini. Thank you very much. Owner's address is 65 East Circle Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Frog Social Media Solutions. Owner of business is Vincent James Fragamini. Business owner's address is 65 East Circle Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. Property address is 65 East Circle Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. The district is A. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Summary of the business is social media and online marketing agency for local small businesses operated out of the home office. Hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Working in home office with a PC, personal computer. No clients or signage. The application has been signed and is dated October 11, 2017.
It's a home office, basically. Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Covers all of our business and we have a general discussion on planning department operations. Mr. Smith, would you please read us on that?
Sure. There are two memos that I sent. One, I sent prior to your prior meeting. Subject being minutes and applications, which I, first of all, had a chance to read over. And these are just some suggestions I'm making relative to trying to speed up things in the office, allowing us to have more time to do planning.
We've discussed at length the minutes.
Okay. So we're on board with that? Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
I provided Denise and the staff with a copy from the Attorney General's office on what minutes are supposed to be.
Yeah, I mean, they are concise. It shouldn't take a day to do. I mean, I did minutes early in my career.
So did I.
And I hated it. And if you start to... Once you start to fall behind, you never catch up. So you need to be able to just really make it efficient how to do that. Okay. We are working with Denise in terms of getting them converted to forms that you can fill out online. That's doable and that should be in place shortly.
In line with that, there is a forms section on the town website. We don't have a planning board line on there. The forms are on... There are forms on in the website that are hard to find.
Yeah, your forms are under your webpage.
No, they're not. They're under general documents and you have to search for them.
Really?
It was very cumbersome.
I thought I got to... Oh, actually.
Remember on the right side of the planning board?
The right or the left side?
The right side.
Okay. It may be there, but there's also a section called forms.
Yes.
And each department should be listed with its forms.
Ideally, there should be one spot where all the forms are and you link to it from either your individual webpage or the generic site. That's, again, not rocket science. That's very doable. The point being, we want applications that you can read.
We've discussed that at length this morning. Thank you, Todd.
We do recognize, Donna knows, some people do show up at the window and fill these out. I think the important thing is if they're going to fill them out by hand, they've got to print it and it has to be legible. But preferably, people should be encouraged to go to the website, punch it up, fill it out, print it up, and get it in. Okay, we've already made an adjustment. We're all... Applications are now going to be initially filed with the town clerk with a diamond date stamp. So that's going to start the clock rate. Assessor certified list of abutters. I believe I was told that we get that. And that's not something... That should be something that's part of the application. The applicant gets beforehand. It is submitted as part of the application. But I do notice you do have a... There is a form that you do have for abutters, to get the abutters list.
You assess what happened to the form, I believe.
Yeah, exactly. But we have to just make sure that's part of the application packet, that the applicant is responsible for getting, not us.
Who would certify that? Those are the required abutters.
The assessor. Typically, roll of thumb, it's just 300 feet. And in fact, the assessor's is a thing they sign at the bottom, is their certification. So that's what the form actually is.
So that means, Donna, that you need to start telling people that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, you... I know you knew, as well as your forms, you have instructions. And we should go in there and update those instructions to make it clear to people that this is what they need to be doing.
So they're going to be required to do the certified mailing and show us the receipts? Am I correct?
We haven't gotten to that yet, but we will.
Sorry.
We will.
Yep.
Actually, that's the next thing. One thing I've also found very helpful is to have the applicants submit envelopes that are pre-addressed and pre-stamped. And if you do a certified mail, you're not required to send a certified mail. If you're the town sending it out, just the fact that you put it in the mailbox is good enough. If you want to send a certified mail, you know, to get that receipt, just as extra oomph when people say, "I never got it," you can do that. But again, that's something I would have the applicant pre-prepare and pay for as part of the fee when they come and file it. That's something you might want to discuss whether you still want... Whether you want it certified or just mailed.
Yeah, because I would just do regular mailing when I did the abutters.
Yeah, I mean, this would still be mailed by us. So in that respect, I don't see necessarily the need to send a certified. I think that's just an extra expense that probably doesn't need to be...
Six dollars a letter.
Yeah, that doesn't need to be borne.
So how do we track the date that it's mailed?
She's mailing it.
Because they're going to submit everything to mail.
Yeah. Yeah. So essentially, they're going to come in with the envelopes.
How do you track it?
But that doesn't answer your question.
Right. How do you track it?
Well, you're not going to track it.
Yes, you are. You're going to do a note to the file. I mailed such and such a date.
Yes, well, that's where she logs that in. Not you're tracking the actual mail.
You need to follow a set process.
That's correct.
And you should have a record of each step.
That's correct. I think we have that.
So am I still going to do the abutters letter like I always do, date it and put it in?
And you know it was mailed on a Thursday or a Friday or...
All the abutter needs is a copy of the legal notice.
Okay.
Okay? So once you get the legal notice done, all you have to do is run up as many copies as you need, fold them up, stuff them in the envelopes. I hope they have a machine that licks them automatically.
So where would a date... Because with the abutters letter, there's a date on it. So with the legal notice, there won't be a date. Should I...
A date for what?
Like when it gets sent out.
Oh, no. I think what he's talking about is just an actual sheet, a form. There'd be one for each project.
Okay.
And on it would be the date it was filed with the town clerk, blah, blah, blah. Exactly. And so essentially, you're just checking it off.
Just the processes that have been...
It's a checklist. Yeah. You know, date the public hearing was published, something like that.
Like a whole project timeline.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. So we're going to ask for envelopes. There were lots and lots of plans and there were multiple copies of the same plan and they were piling up all over the place. I guess I would like to have them file as only the paper copies that are necessary and get as much as we can as PDFs. I think the application would be nice if we got those as a PDF, the full application.
I think it should be required, not nice.
I think it would be nice if you required it.
Okay.
Because that way, you can do a number of things. You can just post it on the website. You can have all the applications posted on the town website with the agenda for the meeting that's upcoming so people can see what's going on before they get to the meeting.
And also...
I found that when we did that in Westfield, we cut down on the foot traffic to the office by like 80%.
There should also be a time limit. I've... And I've only been on the board like two and a half years, but what I've seen happen in the past, which I would like not to see again, is a plan come in on a Monday afternoon. No one gets word of that and it is thrown in front of whatever board it might come across throughout the town on the next consecutive day.
What thing we had talked about with George was like closing the agenda, like on Wednesday?
Yes.
And that would give us time to get it reviewed for the packet to get out to you. There's some concern, you know, people are going to come in at the last minute, "I need this, I need this, I need this tomorrow." They're only going to come in once to say that because they're going to remember that, "Oops, I didn't get it that time, so I better make sure next time I get it in by Wednesday."
I strongly support that.
It just helps.
We haven't had sufficient time on prior... Many prior occasions to review things the way that I would feel comfortable reviewing them.
But we would have the ability to waive that.
Correct.
Sure, for certain circumstances.
Just quickly, some of that may require a bylaw change. Under 7.440, an applicant for site plan review, under this section, shall file with the planning board a regularly scheduled meeting, seven copies each of an application and plant site plan.
Well, here's another point, which is stuff like that shouldn't be in the bylaw.
But I'm saying...
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that.
We need to change the bylaw.
But the planning board...
Take it out of the bylaw, rules and regulations.
The planning board should have its own rules and policies.
Correct. That's right.
And the bylaw is where it tells you, "You need a site plan." Your rules and policies is where you list what you want on that site plan, how many copies you want, blah, blah, blah.
So that could be entirely deleted, right?
For the most part, much of that could be...
Right. But it has to go through the bylaw procedure in order to delete it.
Yes, that's very true.
So...
Make a motion to approve?
That's very true. So the other question then is, one other thing I used to do for the board members is not get them each an individual, you know, four-foot-by-three-foot rollout set. I would get copies of you for ledger size that you can very easily, without rolling in front of the person next to you, look at on your own. So I would suggest that we do that as well. When we do our departmental reviews, we'll be contacting the other departments to see whether they have... Whether I just get PDFs or whether they want hard copies as well.
And if the PDFs are emailed to us within a, you know, week's time, we'll have ample time to...
I mean, to get them... Well, I mean, as it now stands, we send out the meeting packets on Fridays. Do you want them sooner than that?
Well, back to a plan submitted via PDF and one hard copy as you're suggesting, we're up for discussion. What would our deadline be?
If their application has to come in, our deadline for the agenda is Wednesday.
Then it has to be in by Wednesday.
That means they have to have it in by Wednesday.
Right.
But it takes time to put your packet together to get it emailed.
Understood. Yeah, Donna will have...
So the question would be, when do you want to receive the electronic versions of the agenda and the meeting packet?
I've been doing them on Thursday, I believe. Is Thursday enough time?
It all depends on the weekend.
I mean, so right now, you're getting them on Friday.
But if the deadline is Wednesday and we could have that by Thursday rather than Friday...
I mean, it should be easier if we're...
That would be better.
If we're getting everything in PDFs as well. It's just a matter of her dragging and pasting for the most part.
So she's got all day Thursday to do that. By the end of the day, Thursday, we get it.
Perfect. That's right. Okay. Let's see. That's about that. The other thing about PDFs, which is great, is after trying to get going here with the monitors and the laptop, is George will be able to pop those in there and put up the monitors where the plans are. And if you have, you know, have somebody stand up here with an easel with the plan on a board and the neighbors or the abutters all walk up to the front and huddle around it to look at it. If you have it up on the monitors and you know it's a PDF, you can zoom right in on that intersection of that corner of the lot.
We get tied up by it.
Whatever it is. Very good. I don't know if we can afford it, but that would be true. But there's some real advantages to that. And the other thing George and I talked about is, I assume you have Wi-Fi here.
Yes.
You can, you know... One of the other things I would do first thing when I got to the meeting is hook up to Google Maps because there's nothing like... Gee, I wonder what that neighborhood looks like? You go to Google. And the example I was using with George was we were here in another community. It was a scenic row where somebody wanted to take down a portion of a stone wall to put a driveway in for a lot. And so, by gosh, we got up Google Maps. We looked at it and the tree cover covered it. So we took a little yellow guy and put him down on the street view and you could see that every stone in that stone wall and you could pick out exactly where they were going to be putting that in.
I use that, but I also use the aerial or satellite view for GIS because then I got the property lines.
For... National GIS or who's GIS? Our GIS?
Yeah, yeah. East Long Metal GIS.
Perfect.
Satellite view. That way I've got the property lines.
Property lines are great.
And I go to Google Maps for the street view.
Yeah.
And I'm good to go.
But yeah, but whatever you use for a base, it's okay with me. It's just it's a really great way to check up on stuff.
Yeah, I want the property lines.
Yeah. Okay, that takes care of that one.
Just one thing. This is the first night we've had a hookup, so we weren't really prepared to use it.
That's all right.
But in the future, we should have a separate file for each sign picture and for each PDF. Okay, right now, it's like one file with everything together.
Yep.
Just for either who... If you're going to be controlling the computer or if I'm going to be controlling the computer, I ought to have just a list of files preloaded on the computer so I can just call them right up without having to go through Gmail and trying to download everything.
We could bring them on, just bring them on a flash drive. Plug the flash drive in.
Put it in.
Bam. You got the whole list right there.
Just so we... One file at a time, it pops up and it's not... What I was trying to do tonight was download the stuff from Gmail and no kind of thing.
Well, sure. So that's what was taking so long.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay. So that takes care of that. The next thing has to do with the permitting and the approvals and the like.
I just want to say that I personally have not had, taken enough time to review this.
Oh, that's fine.
So if...
Well, I'm not going to go over...
The special permit area. I know we went line by line.
Yes.
With the previous one. I am not prepared to do that this evening.
Well, let me give you the gist of it. Essentially, there are three parts to every decision that you make, especially with special permits and things along those lines. And these have to appear in the minutes of the meeting. So these are steps you really do need to take. And it's not a matter of voting to approve something and then somebody goes back to the office the next day, writes something up, and George goes in, reads it, approves it, and signs it and files it. This is stuff that you all have to do. You have to vote on it. It has to appear in the minutes. The first is conditions. You know, if you're going to have conditions and you want to have conditions, you need to vote on those conditions at the meeting before you close the meeting.[1536.02] vote on those conditions at the meeting before you close the meeting. I did attach to here what I use as my standard templates of conditions that I've developed over the last forty-plus years. All projects don't get all of these. Some big projects do get all of these, but I think we could probably use this as like just a menu and rundown and say, "Yeah, we want that to apply. No, we don't need this. No, we don't need this. No, we don't need this." But I think that would be helpful, also would be helpful for Donna in doing the minutes, 'cause then it's just a matter of taking this template and cutting and pasting into the minutes. So that works out well. Once you've decided on the conditions, then you've gotta make your findings. And that was on the first page. And these are the findings that come out of the zoning bylaw, and you have to go through all of those findings and explain how this project with the conditions meets those findings. And once you agree on that, then you vote on it. So it's sort of a three, a three-step process. But it's something you have to do. If you do go to court, and they go to look at the minutes, and if that stuff isn't in the minutes, it doesn't really count.
Agreed.
And that's the same with subdivisions, it's the same with site plans and all that stuff. So the interesting part's gonna be when you read through the conditions and go, "You gotta be kidding me." But I can say that pretty much every condition that's in here is in here because I didn't have it in here for something, and boy, I wish I had. So better overkill than missing something.
Best learning experiences are by the mistakes you make.
You bet. That's why every permit gets better and better.
That's why I'm really smart.
Very good.
No one seconded it, Doc. I'm not surprised. Made a lot of mistakes.
Hey, if you make at least one or two or three or four or five a day, you're not doing anything.
Then I better get busy.
George is gonna have to go, if you're gonna have to go try to post a meeting for next week, tomorrow, is there a date that works for all of you? So you have some idea? So you're not doing a...
I believe I am available next Wednesday or Thursday.
We do have the evening, probably?
Oh, yes, please. Yes.
Early as possible, but evening.
Five o'clock.
Five works for me.
Five thirty. Let's see.
Getting closer.
Thanks. I'm, evenings I'm fine all week.
So if you still have a public hearing open, how can you have a work session on a public hearing that's open?
We're not, it's not gonna be on...
It's gonna be a meeting.
It's gonna be a meeting, not a hearing.
Remember when I spoke with you about two weeks ago?
Right. And we were ready to do that.
I was very ready, and it just didn't transpire for whatever reason. So something similar to that, well, exactly the same as that.
I mean, and you are, you are correct, because, I mean, there's a whole thing with the emailing as well. You know, it's doing, and having deliberations and rendering opinions.
If it's a public meeting...
It's open.
We, it's an open public meeting, we can deliberate, we can discuss and come up with wording, but we won't vote on it because the vote is part of the public hearing. And we will, whatever changes we make at that meeting will be introduced at the public hearing.
I think once the hearing's open, until it's closed, that's...
What changed from last week when we met?
We just continued, well, we just continued to the...
You continued it, but you continued it to the fifth.
So you could, could you do it, that you would have a special meeting and the only agenda item would be the public hearing on that, and you have, 'cause you have to have the discussion open anyway, and it's, the public hearing is still, the public hearing is still open.
Open.
Yeah, it's still there. So even if you, you can't go around it.
Yeah, you can't keep jumping in and out of the public hearing.
It's still, it's still right there.
So could it be an open discussion on the, an open discussion on the open public hearing for lack, to be a little redundant there?
I think a special meeting on just, to work on wording, but it's still part of the, it still would be continuation of the public hearing.
Yeah, the problem is you continue the public hearing to the fifth.
Yeah.
So I respectfully disagree with that opinion.
It's not an opinion, it's just a...
In my past history, you can, you have a public hearing, you are going to do a meeting of the planning board, period.
Thank you.
With one agenda item, and anything that you come up with, any discussions that you have, any suggestions, that you then repeat all of that at the public hearing.
Present it to the constituents.
So, because if you have a meeting, you don't need to allow the public to speak at a public meeting. You do have to allow them to speak at a public hearing.
That's correct. But they are, but they who are at the public hearing, who gotta continue to the fifth, have no idea that you're gonna be meeting them this in the interim at a meeting that they have the right to attend.
We're gonna post it.
It's gonna be posted.
I think it's gray.
I think it's...
I, I think in order, there needs to be some kind of avenue that we can go down to be able to meet and convene together to allow these, these issues, whatever they may be, coming before us, not to continue to the unfold.
You operate in a glass fishbowl.
No, I don't operate in a glass fishbowl, thank you. I'm saying, there needs to be something that we can come up with or some kind of area.
When you are in government, and you are in town government, it's supposed to be an open process.
Understood. And I did read your open meeting laws that you did send over.
That was just a little piece.
Oh, right, that was a blurb.
And in fact, you are operating in a fishbowl where everything you do is supposed to be open.
To that respect, absolutely.
And it'd be a public, be a public meeting, and it would be posted.
So why wouldn't it be a continuation of public hearing?
Because we...
Because they should have done that at the public...
The hearing is now, the hearing is in continuance now, okay?
But a hearing is, is exactly what it means. You're hearing from the residents. This, at this meeting, we're putting our collective heads together to try to solve or to present a solution, which then would be presented back to the public.
But why couldn't you have done that at a public hearing?
Well, because it would take like five hours to do it.
Because we're going...
I've been to five-hour public hearings.
Yeah, but it would be very clumsy, because we're really kicking ideas around before we've decided that that's what we wanna do. And if we do this correctly, if we do this correctly, we almost would announce kind of, okay, we met, we discussed it further, we did not vote on any things, but these are some of the things that we discussed. It might actually drive a larger public attendance, because there's something concrete. At this public hearings, it's just all been gray, because we haven't had it, we haven't had the ability to really discuss anything concrete.